Okay, well now, we call the City Council Regime Meeting to Order, June 28th. Please rise to the invocation and pledge allegiance and petition to get my Deputy Mayor Anderson our.
That's great. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for your love. Thank you for being with us tonight. Please keep us safe as well as everybody in the city of Bayonne Park, the state of Florida. Please be with all those families down south that are dealing with terrible tragedy down there.
Yes.
Once again, please be with our schoolchildren and be careful driving now that they're out for the summertime. Just guide us through this reading tonight. Keep our first responders and our military safe and sound. We do this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to every government which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please give a roll call.
Councilmember Gray, here. Councilmember Johnson, here. Councilmember Sullivan, here. Deputy Mayor Bernard, here. Mayor Anderson, here.
Thank you. First up, we have Battle of the Bands. You serve us, now we serve you. Ms. Anne Marie has two events coming up. Does the council have any questions for Ms. Anne Marie?
I have questions and some comments that I greatly always appreciate everything you do for the city of Bayonne Park and the fact that you always look after our citizens, our military, and those that are serving those in the past. I greatly appreciate everything you do, what you do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agreed. Do we have any other questions for her? So the request here is for the use of the Bayonne Park Community Center. Time of the event, 1:00 P.M., 5:00 P.M. Doesn't like any road closures? Any other particulars or requests?
Just the actual donation of the center itself, yes.
Right.
Every gentleman requires identification and insurance as well. Do you have that?
Yes, we have insurance.
Thank you.
All right, is there a motion?
I make a motion to go ahead and approve item number 34.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further questions? Seeing them, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray, yes. Councilmember Johnson, yes. Councilmember Sullivan, yes. Deputy Mayor Bernard, yes. Mayor Anderson, yes.
Item number five, Battle of the Bands, again, Day of Remembrance. This is a new one for me, Anne Marie. You want to go over what your request is here?
Yes. As you can see, I sent maps along with it for a road closure of just Veterans Square for a ceremony on Pearl Harbor Day. It is a day of remembrance. It's the 80th anniversary of the Pearl Harbor attacks. It is normally the day we do our Armed Forces Trees and Brick Dedication ceremonies, but due to the remembrance of Pearl Harbor, we've had a ground swell of people who want to attend. The governor is supposed to be sending a representative. A lot of the people from the state are sending representatives. We've had a lot of orders for Brits, which means there's going to be a lot of people there. And my concern is, is that it won't be safe to try to get them squeezed along that median. That's why I asked for the road closure. There will be a color guard, honor guard, and 21 guns salute by the Hino's County Sheriff's Office. There will be all kinds of military music will be played. So this is a true remembrance ceremony with a lot of other ceremonies involved in it. That's why we're trying to squeeze it into this three or four hours, two or three hours, actually.
Okay.
So what part of Main Street, I mean?
It's literally Veterans Square.
Yeah, just the cones would be set up like at an angle to kind of?
Just straight across both ends.
From Butler Avenue to South Forest.
Right.
So both lanes going east and both lanes going west?
Yes, yes. And that's the least intrusive closure I could think of because basically all they have to do is go around the block.
Obviously, with that, the city will have to request the DOP.
Yeah.
Be that the DOP rule.
And I'm glad we did. Lovely event, appreciated, but just need to ask, did it really be toilets available? Was it maybe the?
Yes, there will. We'll be providing portable toilets at this event.
Thank you.
So the only thing you do request in the low road closure?
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm still not clear what way you want the road closed, that side hole or both of them? I'm both sides of that wall.
Because?
They're cool in the office. Or my shop.
Yeah.
So next block over.
Okay, so how would the cars go? Have to go around?
They would go down the road, pass by the shop, take a left by Apple Top, and back by the depot.
Right. Like I said, I just wanted to be the least intrusive. I know it's a weekday and everything else, but I'm trying to think of safety all the way around.
It's only for two hours. It's also at the end of the day.
Yes.
I think everybody gets it as a good of it.
And December, that date is on a weekday?
It's a Tuesday, December 7th, Pearl Harbor Day. To give you an idea of what I'm talking about as far as attendance goes, within 24 hours of us announcing a day of remembrance, and I'm doing it so I can keep account on how many seats I'm going to have to get, within 24 hours, I had calls for 40 seats reserved.
So you would be finishing up at 6:00, but then the cones and stuff would have to be picked up right after because of the people to get?
Right, right. Well, I'm hoping that we can get through the ceremonies by 5:30 so that we've got time to just get the seats up and gone and?
No, I'm just asking the city manager in regards to the overtime afterwards. I mean, are people going to come in late and leave late or are they going to leave at, you know, early regular hours and?
Or wrecking house stay and we don't get them coming?
I'm sorry?
Or wrecking house stay?
Thank you.
That's a great idea.
We wouldn't have to actually remove the cones just more or less get them out of the roadway.
Well, this and there'll be signs up too because you probably, some of you saw, she does have the diagram in here. And it is moved, and it's a short time I'm off for, but it is moving a lot of cars during that time coming both ways. So it'll take more than just a few cones and signs. Definitely have to warm ahead of time or somebody will run right through it. But we'll get them. Jerry, make sure I'm coming to it anyway.
No, that's right. As a matter of fact, you've reserved two seats yourself.
I did. Very good. Any other further questions for? Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we approve item 5. Approve Battle of the Bands, Event Day of Remembrance for December the 7th, 2021. For this review.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. We'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray, yes. Councilmember Johnson, yes. Councilmember Sullivan, yes. Deputy Mayor Bernard, yes. Mayor Anderson, yes.
Very good. Anne Marie, we thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up on our consent agenda, we have the minutes from June 14th, 2021.
Mayor, can we do this right now or?
Yes. There was a late entry. We have a proposal for City Bayonne Park on kayak rental service at Lake Corona.
About a month ago, I received an email from Casey Wallhart. In a, Adam Greenstein with Rent.Fun had met with the county and about renting kayaks, an automatic kayak rental business he has. And Casey sent it to myself and to Scott at Sebring and gave his information. And I've been talking with Adam back and forth. And actually, he had sent in an agreement and what I handed out is that you all have here. And I got with Jerry on it. Jerry got me Friday because, as I was telling one of you earlier, I was wondering if he could do without putting out an RFP. And Jerry was saying that he could do an agreement. And if other vendors then came forward, we'd try to go out to RFP. And I asked him if it's Friday, I think. And I said, well, if you want to hold off, Adam might be here this week in about 2:30 or so. I was in with Danielle and they called and said he was here. So he had just, he'd come back all sweaty from being over at the park and thought it would be a good idea to set up. There was a bunch of people over there. He thinks it'd be a good idea. So I asked him if he could stay here tonight. He was down in Okeechobee County, looking at doing a zig leg down there this. And I did tell him that, because he said, could your attorney get to me quick? I said, well, you'd have to have an attorney look at it. He said, well, I am an attorney. So he's from the Boston area and if Adam, you'd like to come up and talk to the council?
Adam, if you could, just please give your name and address for the record.
Hi, councilmembers and Deputy Mayor and Mayor Adam Greenstein. I'm the CEO of Rent.Fun. My address is 107 Warren Street in Bedford, Massachusetts. I'm delighted to be with you here all night.
Very good. Tell us a little bit about your organization and what you intend to do.
Yes, sir. So we are a national recreational equipment rental company, all automated rentals. So we do things like bikes, scooters, and most recently expanding into automated kayak rentals. So I believe you guys might be somewhat familiar with the scooter rentals. I hope Sebring just implemented a program much recently. And the concept is very much the same. The technology is the same. What we do is basically to secure all of these, all of the equipment, is basically set up a steel mesh locker on the water's edge that has a boat ramp. The, all of the equipment is stored in individual units in the locker. You scan the locker with your mobile app. That unlocks the locker and, you know, begins the rental process just like with a scooter. So we have been, the reason why I'm down here from Boston is because we operate bike, scooters, kayaks here nationally. And what we do is look for areas that have really unmet demand for kayak rentals. And by our research, this area really pops off the map. We've got a lot of people searching into Google saying kayak rentals. And you know what? There's really not many operators here that are serving that demand. So then we zoom in and we look at the most visited parks in the general region. And we found, once again, that this is one of the most highly trafficked parks here in the general region. I stopped by this afternoon to say, is there an appropriate, to see if there was an appropriate site where we can kind of install our rental station here. And it's on far end of the park, near the boat ramp, kind of an unused space, a patch of grass that we can install our equipment at. And then we'd be taking on all liability for the program and have all the appropriate insurance. So it's really a request to use the space there to operate our business and just add this service to the community.
How does the insurance work? I mean, you have insurance, but like, so if someone scans it, they go online, they register, they get a QR code, and then they go down and then they do, and the door opens, they slide out their kayak. How long do they get to keep it? Or does it, I mean, I know the scooters have some type of tail tail device on it. If they disappear, that they can find them miles and miles away. But what happens with the kayak?
Sure. So essentially, the second that you unlock the unit and are starting your rental, right, your rental clock is ticking, right? And, you know, we charge $10 to $15 an hour depending on the location. And now what happens is if you, if you don't end up returning that unit, well, first, we can see that, you know, that locker unit wasn't open to begin to return the equipment. And then if the next user comes and they see that there's equipment missing, or our maintenance, our technician people come and they see that there's missing equipment, we can see who the last renter was. And then that instance would charge that last renter after, if we determine that they've stolen. And the renters are agreeing to all of those rental terms when they're, when they begin their rental.
Do you have to have a license to rent the boat? So I don't know anything about waters.
So, so there's no, most owners expect, it's not, it's not a motor powered, it's an, you know, unpowered watercraft, just that you went out there on, you know, a tube or something on the lake.
Oh, okay.
So you don't need a license for the kayak. We don't necessarily encourage fishing off of the boat. And if you are fishing, then, you know, in many cases, you won't need a permit. But in all of that is included in our education materials, both in the app and with signage at the location.
So they give directly the lifeguard vest as well, vests?
Exactly.
Oh, okay.
So inside each unit is, you know, Coast Guard approved life vest. And then we regularly, our technicians, as they maintain these units, can inspect all the equipment and make sure all the buckles and the straps are all intact. If there's anything that's damaged, we promptly replace it. In the meantime, if there is something that's damaged or missing, of course, that unit is disabled until we replace the equipment so that, you know, everybody's going with fully functional, safe stuff.
How often do you inspect your equipment?
So it depends based on man, you know, because the wear and tear is different. But in the ones that we, in the pilots that we've done so far, you know, it's really anywhere between once a, once a week to once every two weeks.
I didn't want you to say, well, we inspect it every 90 days.
No, we're here all the time.
Okay.
Where, in order to, you know, we invest in a lot of equipment, you know, that tens of thousands of dollars to implement this. And it's very much in our interest to ensure that it's all rentable and in great condition and that people are going to come back. So it's definitely, we do our part.
I have a couple. Go ahead.
I know they work in Sebring. I see them all the time. I have to stop all the time to let them go about with the scooters. As a matter of fact, when you first started, I saw the city administrators getting on them and testing them to see how they were. So is this something that, and I know, I heard terminology, pilot. So you're going to pilot this for a period of time or is this something you're looking for long term?
Yeah. So what we would, we would look for, what we put as a three-year agreement.
Okay.
And certainly, if it's successful, we'd like to be here for, you know, another three years after that.
Well, so technically, how this is done is, you know, it's a concession on city property. Constitutionally, you're required to charge rent. And traditionally, the way it's done is that, you know, you go out to RFP and ask for people to make bids as to the price and how much they're going to pay you with regard to that offer. But given the entrepreneurship of bringing this out here, nobody's mentioned it to us before. Talked to the city manager, as he mentioned, and we felt like it was appropriate for us to go ahead and give them an agreement. I would think three years would be too long for the first one because you do need to handle properly, I would say, you know, give them a year contract. And then after that, you need to go concession, RFP. Make sure, you know, there's all kinds of RFPs out there for it. And that you'd have to compete for it, which I'm sure they do fine jobs. It's a large organization. Love scooters, by the way. Use them national, Tampa and Chicago all the time. But, so any rate, I mean, getting a contract together is no problem. There's all kinds of contracts, forms out there for this or concessions. They're going to require insurance, they're going to require identification, and they would have to pay some kind of rent, which I have to leave to you because it really is, I don't know what fair market value would be. That's typically, this is we mentioned with the airport. You have to get fair market value for it.
And sir, we, well, in the agreement that we proposed, we proposed 5% revenue share of just gross receipts that we pay out quarterly, but that would be for a three-year agreement. Because it, you know, takes us some time to earn back the revenue on the investment. That's why we proposed a three-year agreement. If it's a one-year agreement, I mean, it kind of changes the dynamic a bit. So I guess if possible, you know, we would look for a three-year agreement and then, you know, are open to the 5% revenue share.
Well, that's just my recommendation. It's up to you what you decide you want to do. Just as we've seen, RFPs are fair, but how long you want to have an initial agreement, which is being done basically on the basis of his entrepreneurship by bringing it to us and the idea of doing this. But at some point, you do need to go to RFP for the concession.
Could you do it? Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to ask some, did I hear correctly that you're doing something in Sebring?
We're having, we're exploring Sebring right now. Yeah, nothing.
The other, the other pilot programs that you've done, what type of length of agreements have you done and what sort of prices have you paid?
Sure. So, so as an example, like, we just won a RFP with the state of Ohio, the Department of Natural Resources, to implement this at eight of their lakeside parks. That is a seven-year agreement. But it has a, because of like the determined and because of how competitive and traffic those sites are, it has a bunch higher revenue share at 15%.
Is that based on RFP, though?
That was based on RFP.
See, I wouldn't have any problem with whatever money you want to set for it because of RFP. I simply suggest this because we're quite passing the typical and fair way of dealing with these. And because of this entrepreneurship to bring it to you.
Are there other elements associated kayaks? I mean, would there be other things that you would bring in that's not discussed these tonight, like, you know, the little bicycle things and all that? Or is it just the kayak?
So kayak, actually, going out there, I, seeing the site, I, kayakable lake for sure, but I think paddle boards, stand-up paddle boards, if you see those, that would even, might even be more popular. So I think we kind of interchange kayaks and paddle boards depending on the location and they sit in the same kind of steel mesh locker. So that's what we would start with. And, you know, we're always innovating and expanding to new service lines, like things like, I'd like to do lawn games, rentable, you know, beanbag tossing, that type of thing that you can rent from a locker. But right now, we're just talking about kayaks and potentially stand-up paddle.
So how many of the units are in, I mean, because you have several diagrams, you know, it's going to be a big unit sitting out there on our pretty beach. So, you know, how is it going to blend in with what we have going on there right now?
Sure. So what we would be, what we'd probably start with is a four by two, so eight units. And that would be eight kayaks and our, you know, stand-up paddle boards. Wouldn't, I don't, you know, directly interfere with that beach area. What we look for is a relatively flat grade that is near a boat ramp. And actually, the beach and the sand, you know, you want to keep that away from the equipment too. So what we've identified is on the far end of the park, there's that boat ramp that goes in there. And then there's this drive that kind of, you know, drives in and then it loops around. And in that loop, there's a patch of grass there that I saw that is relatively flat grade. Our unit is basically 10 foot by 7 foot and can easily fit in that space. And we put down some concrete, not some concrete, sorry, some cinder blocks, dig them into the ground, splay some mulch out around side it, and some resistant fabric to avoid the trenches being dug. And we think that could be pretty non-intrusive to that boat ramp area.
That median that he's talking about has been pretty neglected anyways.
Yeah.
I think it would be an upgrade to this.
Yeah. I do too.
I have a question, if I may, Adam, please. I know that some big box stores have this type of system when they actually have items that they sell out front for people to come and pick them up without actually going into the store that are prepaid. You use the same type of kiosk system on your phone. But I also know that some of the, I've been told sometimes they have to be maintained or cleaned on a regular basis, almost sometimes daily. A lot of times the doors don't open properly. So I wondered what type of problems you've had with this before, being the fact that you're close to the water, on water. Rains a lot in Florida. So what type of issue would you have as far as the locking system opening, closing properly, you know, where people are trying to use it? You know, the water itself, because where the locks don't open sufficiently causes problems.
Yeah.
If you found that out in the past?
Yes, so actually, so one distinction between maybe some of those other kiosks and ours is that our, all the technology is probably in the user's phone and in this cellular lock that we install onto the device. So unlike, there's no powered connection to the equipment. It's the same technology that's being used on, you know, the scooters that are questioning, you know, outside in Sebring. So in my, you know, six years career in bikes and scooters and operating those things here in this region, saltwater and nearwater causes a whole lot of damage to the, to actually these vehicles, right? But the locking technology is all really a secure interaction between a phone and this lock. And so we, you know, we haven't had trouble with that in really any environment. And the steel locker itself is powder, you know, powder coated and designed to withstand these types of elements.
So I would just say that if this works out really well, I think it would be a great thing to have the paddle boards on Lake Two Lake. It's one of the oldest lakes in North America and it's a beautiful little lake and that's just eight blocks away.
Oh, fantastic.
I just want to ask, what make my mistake then? Our citizens pretty much know how to get in touch with each one of us. So if something don't work, they will call us. You don't want to have them calling you, right? Or someone that, they don't mind calling them.
Customer support, seven days a week, right from the app, phone, email, text, that we're there to assist with the rental transaction. You know, the types of things, with bikes and scooters, you worry about get city council, you know, vandalism, scooters lying out in all in the road and bikes. You don't, you don't get that type of thing as well.
Okay.
You might get a caller too, but as with any new program, but relatively, it's pretty low, low friction.
So one last question. If you could rent it for the day, that means that technically you can load it up in your car and go paddle someplace else.
You could. I mean, the clock's running while you're transporting it to the next location. And, you know, for a day, what we've seen is that the average rental duration is about 60 to 90 minutes. You know, if you're taking this out for eight-hour days, at that point, you might want to just buy your own kayak because that is going to add up.
They're going to take them back to another lake and go fishy with them. Like the ones in Sebring, the ones in Sebring, when I talked to the administrators in Sebring, they were riding those, because they take them out pretty much all the time. They said that there are parameters, and if you go outside that parameter, it automatically will show.
Geowalking.
So, okay, so it's the same thing with the kayaks?
Not with the kayaks. There's no.
You can really put them both some other place?
You could. If you buy the truck, you can put it in and go some other place, yeah. But there's something in particular, from our perspective, that's wrong with that, just is you can go to, you know, an outfitter, you know, a retail store, you pick it up, drive to where you want to use it and come back. I think we haven't seen much of that yet, but it sure is going to happen.
I don't have a problem with it with getting to the shop. I mean, if it doesn't work out, obviously, then we won't renew it.
Would you all, would please consider how long on the contract? And the 5% that he's proposing is sufficient? So we have, I have a basis by this new contract.
Personally, I'm fine with the three years, the 5%. I would just like to see some type of provision in there for lack of maintenance that we could terminate the agreement. You know, if it turns out that there's only one of six that are operational on a regular basis, you know, that sort of thing would be an issue.
Like, there's only three kayaks and there's supposed to be eight. It looks really chintzy.
And I don't have a problem with the three years either because from my experience, it takes about a year, year and a half for things to get loaded. And then you'll see within the first six to eight months if it's going to be good or not.
Yeah, that makes sense. I do. So what if other companies want to do the same thing? Or we have contract, you know, I built some of them for that.
Yeah, I would just say at the end of the three years, that we plan to go to RFP.
Yes.
And then if there's another company that has a different request for, let's say, scooters or whatever, then we'll cross that bridge and we get them.
New contract on my basis, thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And speaking of the scooters, they, they're already wanting to come to Bayonne Park.
Yeah.
Bring them on.
Yeah. They're fun.
These are, these are, they're not, they're like, you know, paddle in the way.
Oh, really?
They're, you know, one point in front of the other.
Bring on the electric ones.
Electric ones, that's what I'm talking about. I've never done that before.
Yeah, well, I mean, these are electric. They're electric.
All right.
Yes.
We have item number six. We have the minutes from June 14th, regular council meeting. Is there a motion?
A salute. Second.
Any changes? Seeing them, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray, yes. Councilmember Johnson, yes. Councilmember Sullivan, yes. Deputy Mayor Bernard, yes. Mayor Anderson, yes.
All right, next up, we have item number seven. This is the first reading for ordinance 08-2021.
This is ordinance with City of Bayonne Park, 401 Bayonne Park, 2500 code. Providing regulations for artisan manufacturing, craft, food, and beverage. Providing regulations for artisan manufacturing and craft food and beverage production uses. Specifically, we need Article Two, identifying artisan manufacturing and craft food and beverage production as a mid-use in table two point oh, four point oh one A. And then in Article Three, providing supplemental development standards for artisan manufacturing, craft food and beverage production uses in section three twenty one, one point oh two. And then in Article Nine, providing supplements for artisan manufacturing, craft food and beverage production. Provide supplemental, provide application, provide respect.
Very much. Yep?
Good evening, Council, uh, Jeff Schmunker, uh, Central Florida Regional Planning Council. So we're back. Um, it was a month later than I think I promised last time, uh, when we were here in the municipal meeting.
Of course you did, yeah.
Thanks. I won't take that personally.
Jizz, you know.
Um, but we, we are back. I, I just got a very brief presentation, uh, what I want to do, just, just for the folks in the audience, just a reminder of what this is, uh, and then just go over a summary of the language that's in front of you tonight. So essentially, this is a, this is an item that we've been working with the city on, the staff, uh, to draft some amendments in the city's land development code to essentially provide some new opportunities throughout the city, uh, to provide for opportunities to have these kind of lower manufacturing production type uses in a number of different areas outside of what we think of as just, you know, your industrial areas. Uh, so what we've come up with, um, with city's guidance is what we're calling artisan manufacturing and craft food and beverage production. And that kind of tackles a number of different areas when this first came up, uh, with a number of different types of businesses that might, uh, potentially locate in, in the city. Next slide. Uh, so again, just briefly, generally speaking, when we talk about, uh, these types of, these types of uses, uh, what do they, what do they consist of? Um, they generally have businesses that have an obvious place or origin of production, uh, that supports them. Uh, created using unique materials based on distinctive products and concepts, uh, produced as high quality products, but generally in smaller quantities, um, most of the time by independent companies, not your, your large corporations. Uh, typically with human involvement and process, but they may also include businesses that are using emerging technologies, uh, not only a product themselves, but perhaps maybe in the method in which they, they create those products. Uh, but ultimately, they're, they're a, they're a craft type or a, a smaller, uh, uh, manufacturing or production type of product uh, that goes out for distribution or sale, you know, locally or, you know, local regional here. Um, so the first, uh, the first items, um, with regard to the proposed amendments would be in Article Nine. Uh, this is where we're providing, uh, two definitions for artisan manufacturing as well as craft food and beverage production. Um, so generally, art, artisan manufacturing businesses would allow, uh, lower order custom made business products. Those might include glassblowing, paper making, um, jewelry or craft production, artist studios, um, all of those of which might include classes or areas that might have an opportunity to invite people in to have classes or teach about that craft, um, as well as, uh, lower order custom made medical supplies. Uh, we've had some chatter about some folks that might want to come in doing some like prosthetics. And so as we're talking about this artisan manufacturing, we see the opportunity to kind of build it under this umbrella that you might have some other businesses as well that are these lower order, you know, manufacturers that don't need the, uh, the, the high industry areas, but could be creating some lower order products in, in like the downtown, for instance. Uh, but these could also be furniture making, upholstery, woodworking, um, you could run the gamut on a number of these different types of businesses. Next slide. Um, so again, uh, building under the umbrella, we thought this was an opportunity to bring in the craft food and beverage production. Um, and essentially what this would be, would be some of your small, small batch bakeries, confectionery shops, cottage food production like cheese or pasta type businesses. Uh, and then of course, micro breweries, distilleries, wineries, other beverage production. We've, again, had some chatter on that as well, uh, to come into the downtown. And of course, city's code right now does not really address an opportunity to manufacture something in some of these commercial districts, um, and then allow them to, to sample those products. So this, again, would be kind of a hybrid type of use that would allow, uh, those opportunities as well. Next slide. So in Article Two, the, uh, the proposal here would be to add artisan manufacturing and craft food and beverage production into the table of land uses, um, which would be permitted by right use, uh, in all of the city's commercial, industrial districts as well as the land development zoning. Um, and this would be under a category type which would allow for outdoor storage. And I know we had some discussion on that before and we'll certainly open this up for discussion. Um, but there's some reason perhaps to, to allow that, uh, that's where we have it listed for now. Uh, but you'll notice there that there's an asterisk in the, uh, it's kind of tough to see on the screen. But there's an asterisk there, and what that asterisk is, and we highlighted at the bottom, supplemental development standards are required. So while it's permitted use by right, there are still additional standards and, and development things that we want to look at at the city through staff, uh, when one of these businesses wants to come in. Uh, additional regulations that would be looked at in addition to what the rest of the land development code already provides.
So you would, you would, we would look, you and us, we would look at that as the business apply for it and then consider it, what it would take?
Right, so for instance, when you have a, when in the, in the, in the table where you have a permitted use, most uses are just like a restaurant, it's just, it's a restaurant. Of course, we review it against, you know, different standards, setbacks, parking, landscaping, all those different standards. But this particular use type requires some additional things that are really specific to these. So, and we're, we're going to go through those, I'm going to summarize those, and we can go into detail on, on any number of these. Um, but it would be a supplemental development standard. So this type of use would be required to follow all of the uses indicated, but there'd be additional standards that would be required. Um, so that's a good dovetail into, uh, Article Three. Uh, the proposal is to add supplemental development standards under section three eleven. And this would be a new section three eleven point oh two, uh, supplemental standards for craft artisan manufacturing, food craft, you know, business, excuse me, businesses. Um, so briefly, I, I, what I'm going to, like I said, I'm just going to go through these real quick. If there's anything in your packet that you want to go into in more detail, we can certainly address that.
Sure.
Um, so essentially, this would apply to all new existing and expanding businesses. Um, and those provisions would include that all businesses have a well marked and visible entrance. Uh, manufacturing activities have to, uh, occur indoors. Um, there is an opportunity to provide some mechanical equipment, if you will, on the outside. Um, all of that would have to be fully screened. Um, where, where you would have a use, that would be abutting a residential zoning district or a existing residential use, uh, we would require to go ahead and have a type D landscape buffer, uh, provided. And then again, uh, where you have any outdoor storage or again, any mechanical equipment that would be located outdoors, all of that has to be within a side or rear yard. So if we're thinking about downtown, you couldn't have any of this out on the, the front of the street, it would have to be in the rear or on the side. And again, that would have to be fully screened. And what we're, we're proposing there is that it would be screened with a type A landscape buffer, which I think has a minimum of fifteen feet. But in those cases, you would also have to put up a opaque fence, so something that you couldn't see through, or, or a wall. And again, it's, it's one to protect from nuisances, noise, those types of things, but also the, the visual aesthetic as well. You don't want to have an outdoor storage area where you see operations and things going on or storage and stuff.
So the screen could be just the plant material as well, just plants?
If, if you're actually utilizing an outdoor storage area, it has to have the landscaping and the wall, or, or an opaque fence. So both of those, it's not a and or, it's landscape and the...
What if there's not enough room for the landscaping and the wall?
Well, those, some of, those would obviously be opportunities to look at a variance and we could review those. Um, my hope is, is that with some of the ones in the, in the downtown where they might come in, uh, some of those properties might be a little bit smaller. But of course, this opens the door for, you know, your C two areas and other commercial districts. Um, so there might be some challenges, I would assume, maybe in the downtown. Um, but if we're talking about a smaller space in the downtown, I don't know how much storage also they would need outdoors. Some of it, of course, could be indoors.
Right.
But that would, that would probably be a case by case basis for sure.
It was my hope, I mean, that this would be focused on the C four mainly because the parking is already not essential for the existing businesses that we have. And we'll get to that parking when, when we get there, but, you know, I, I understand right now it's zero lot line on, in the C four where you can construct, so you could have walls just on zero lot lines and it'll just have absolutely no landscape whatsoever. And those walls can be made of wood and they can be made of fence.
Right, and, and most of that probably would not require a buffer in any way unless, for some reason, you had a C four zoning district directly abutting a residential district. I think we, we've got a couple on the south side, um, and you might have some on the periphery on the north side of Maine. Um, but again, some of those properties are not developed out.
It only requires a buffer if it's abutting residential ground.
Right, but if you're, if you are using outdoor, unless it's outdoor storage. But, so if you do have a building in the downtown where it's, it's a full, what they call a perimeter block building, all the way to the zero lot line, I mean, there's nowhere to store anything outdoors anyway, so your intention would be to probably, wherever you're going to store, it's probably going to be indoors. So then that buffer and that wall doesn't come into play.
Yeah, it's kind of my initial thinking is that this is more for indoors anyway.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, my, my concern would be that if there was just a slimmer of a yard somewhere that they just put up some fence with some plastic slats going through it, then over time start to crack and look just as ugly as all out, you know? How to prevent that? You know, if it's going to be a fence, I'd prefer not to have a mesh fence because people will just store their junk back there and it may not necessarily even be work related or, or production related, it'd just be some junk. So prevent that on your C four at least, because I mean, it's supposed to have a historic feel to it.
I guess my question would be, what type of requests have you had, uh, to have the outdoor component of this?
Well, so a lot of this is based on a couple other cities in our community, uh, or in our region. Uh, Wauchula, uh, we've also looked a lot over in the city of Tampa area and the neighboring cities over there. But, uh, so some of this language was pulled from there because we, we know, especially with the, with the craft beer and winery businesses, I mean, they have a need to take certain things outside. Certain components of their business, like silos and different things that they use as part of their business have to be outside. Um, so I, I, my hope is, is as we were writing this and looking at the downtown, being familiar with the downtown, is that if you're going to be a business that's going to come in to want to do some of those things, hopefully it kind of works itself out organically to some degree that, you know, we're not going to purchase a property where we don't have the opportunity to, to do these, these certain things. And these would be required, this is why.
I'm just wondering, you know, we are getting a craft beer.
That's the, that's the challenge.
Do they have a silo or are they required, do they need a silo? Have they presented anything to the city in regards to any construction needs?
The emails that I've had have not gotten into any of the specifics about what they want to do, just the location.
Are they just importing them from somewhere else?
Well, so the silos generally sit on site and they could be fermenters or they could be different things that, you know, are part of the process, but...
There's no other problems.
I think you're just bringing it from another place, I don't know if they're going to have a silo.
Yeah, some, some of them don't, right, they, they might not need it, they could just come in off trucks and they've got all this.
But where they're going, there is ample area there where they can put in a fence in place. And like I said, my concern would be that, let's just say that in five years they vacated and that fence is up and then someone else goes in there and becomes a junkyard. How do you prevent that, you know, or how do you conceal that?
Yeah, well, I mean, part of that, I would say, is somewhat of a code enforcement issue. But, um, you know, in the code, I mean, is it, is it somebody that's just storing junk? I mean, we talk about it in this language that whatever is being stored on site has to be related to, you know, the business. Now, somebody might bring their motorcycle and it's parked back there for six months and code enforcement goes by and sees a motorcycle there today and it's clearly not part of the business. Um, no, again, is that...
But it's not intended for parking?
No, it's not. So, so the idea though is that the storage would be something directly related to, to the business. So if that business is no longer there and you start to see somebody storing stuff on a property, I would start to think that that becomes somewhat of a classification of, you know, I don't know, a junkyard or any other type of storage area that's not related to the business. And I think you would certainly have some recourse through code enforcement there, but...
So that would be something that's in the language of this new code?
Well, I think that in the language that we have, I believe it says anything that's stored on site, it has to be directly related to, to the business. So if your business is a distillery or something and you're storing cabs or you're storing products or loose products, uh, that would be one thing. Now, if you're storing broken down cars or you're storing old lawn mowers or you, you, you can name a million different things, right? Uh, I think that there would be an argument there that it's not related to the business.
Correct.
Okay. Um, okay, so, and then, so that, yeah, we talked about the silos, we'll, we'll go to the next slide. So with regard to the parking, um, parking shall be established on the site, uh, as is required by the, the city's code except where exemptions apply. We put that in there because in the downtown, you know, there are the exemptions where you don't have to provide parking. Uh, the caveat to that would be that the primary operating area would require one parking space for one thousand square feet of the actual operating area. Um, where indoor non-production retail areas...
Explain that one more time, operating area. So if I own the business, I have to have parking for me and my staff?
Right, correct.
Okay, so right now a church doesn't, isn't required to have parking for their staff. They can just park wherever they want in the C four.
Right, we're proposing to have parking for, for the, uh, for the use, for the business.
But there are some businesses that just don't have it. I mean, there was a couple of businesses on Main Street that don't have any parking whatsoever and they just use, uh, Main Street. So how are they going to be able to comply?
So these, these are some of these that we'll talk through.
Yeah, I mean, that was the whole purpose of this was to allow those businesses.
Not close at all.
Yeah, there's got to be a way where those businesses, what is it, do we...
Well, I mean...
Well, historically, what we've always done is for living quarters, uh, there has to be parking. But for non-living, commercial only, there is no parking.
Right.
I don't see a reason why we would have to go around that.
Yeah, so, right, actually, so that, that is where the exemption comes in. So what the proposal would be is that, so if you are in the C four, you would not have to provide the additional parking. And that would be, uh, for your workers or people that are going to, you know, patronize your business or, you know, anyone else that's going to come there.
Right.
Yeah, that was the purpose of the exemption.
So that element of C four would remain the same?
It would, exactly.
But keep in mind, the whole point of this is to allow more uses downtown so that we can hopefully fill up all of our buildings not...
Right, not put more restrictions on it.
Correct.
Correct, yep. Um, so, yeah, most of what I'm going to explain right here, what you see on the board, this is really for those areas that are outside of the, the downtown.
Right.
Um, so where you would have, and I, I apologize, I kind of skipped over the, the non-production areas. Um, but the, the code or the proposal would be to allow for some of these non-production areas. And those would be for entertainment areas or some of the classes or things that we've talked about, tasting rooms, as you hear about with breweries and distilleries. Um, that would have a certain percentage requirement. In fact, if we could go back on the screen, um, that area, that, that non-production area for the interior, we would limit that to thirty percent because the idea here is, is to bring business in, not necessarily, I mean, we can already have restaurants, we can already have a number of different uses in the downtown. Um, but to limit that, that area to thirty percent of the gross floor area. So you've got a five thousand square foot building, fifteen hundred feet of that could be your tasting room or, you know, whatever it is that you're supporting as a, you know, retail area or something that, you know, sell your product to the front side of the, you know, storefront area. Um, but that would also, uh, open the door perhaps for, for live entertainment, and those are the, one that I want to mention. Um, the city's credit ordinances does allow, has a noise ordinance for nine PM to six AM, no noise. Um, we're, we're following that here, but providing the opportunity, and again, this would be where you have some outdoor non-production area uh, to allow for some outdoor seating or, you know, outdoor entertainment. Um, with the hope being that for most cases, uh, you know, where you do have outdoor entertainment that, you know, after nine o'clock is not too late, but of course, that would be something going back in looking at your, your code ordinances. But right now, it's followed that. Um, and then again, I think I mentioned some of the other things that are just for the storage area and the, the silos. Uh, but, uh, the code is, is, is written to allow that it's, it's not just production, it's also, you know, to have these non-production areas as well for, for retail sale. Uh, so next, next slide. And so that's, that's where we provide the additional parking requirement. So while you have a parking requirement for the actual production area, you would have additional parking requirements for, for those non-production areas. So if it's just a retail area that's indoors, uh, that would be an additional two parking spaces for each one thousand square feet. And if we're talking about, um, outdoor areas or indoor outdoor areas that are non-production that, for not just retail, but, uh, related to, you know, like tasting areas, outdoor seating areas, entertainment areas, uh, those would then revert back to, this is just kind of regurgitating, it's already indicated, it's a point five, uh, parking spaces, um, for each seat. That's, that's provided. Um, so again, just to recap that, there, there is the exemption in the downtown, and these additional parking requirements would be had for the other areas throughout the city, um, but just recognizing the different types of production, non-production, indoor and outdoor that, that could potentially be had for those uses.
So on Main Street, we don't have any handicap parking? There's just zero handicap that I'm aware of unless we have a city parking lot? So is the city going to have to do any type of handicap parking in any of these places? Or is that going to be a hub and a hub and a...
I don't think that that changes this at all. In fact, the code does not require that, but, um, that's a good note to have. That might be something that we all want to look into at some point to, um, maybe take advantage of when we get that. Um, see if there's some opportunities to provide for some handicap parking along, along these, but, no, this would not change that anywhere.
So you mean, motion to approve and, uh, ordinance...
So if this didn't go in front of P and Z, did that make any difference?
It was, it was quite the first reading.
It, well, we, we did go to P and Z last, uh, earlier this month and we did not have the forum. Um, but to keep this moving, we decided to go ahead and bring it to you all for first reading. Um, so any comments you all have tonight, we'll, we'll take it to them, uh, next month, uh, when we come back to you at the end. So any comments you all have tonight, we'll, we'll take it to them next month, uh, when we come back to you at the end of the month.
I'd have a couple more questions. The, uh, two of the terms that are used in here is lower order and the, I believe, smaller quantity. I guess the question would be, who gets to determine what the heck lower order is and what is the smaller quantity?
Good, good question. I guess, uh, being intuitiveness of lower order, just thinking of, uh, you know, not raw materials of large, you know, quantities coming in or just, you know, the little products. We can certainly word smith that. I know, I think that's in the definition, actually, uh, referring to.
And what I'm getting at is if you look, think back, uh, you know, 50, 60, 70 years ago, a lot of, a lot of big towns, you know, most of their factories were actually downtown. A lot of these old, these factory companies, you see these big curricular workhouses that were three, four stories.
Yana Company. Yana Company.
Yana Company, yeah, perfect example. So they were doing pretty intense, I mean, back, you know, obviously we probably, we're not gonna have that nor we probably want that level.
Right.
But that's not out of the realm of, you know, quote unquote, historic, right? So, I don't wanna tie our hands here.
So.
That, that's kind of what my push was, to have everything indoors. Because the thought being that if you're not making noise, you're not making vibrations, you're not pissing off all the neighbors, who really cares what you're doing? You know what I mean?
True.
That's kind of what I was getting. So if you, let's say there's a, you have a company like Auto-Ox, right? They install all sorts of gizmos, all sorts of tuners in cars. They decide, you know what, there's a, a widget that nobody makes for a car, we're gonna get a CNC machine, start making that and that explodes into robotics and, you know, who knows, right?
Sure.
But again, as long as you're not disturbing the neighbors, why do we really care?
The only disturbance I think that there would be is just, just big semis and stuff like that. I mean, which are supposedly not allowed on Highway 64 on the East Street.
But they are. There's no, there's no through traffic.
Right.
But they, every single business, whether it be a convenience store or whatever, they just deliveries every day. I, I work next to a bar that, uh, is, you know, that doesn't matter. And it's a pretty small bar.
So we could go in different directions. I mean, we, we could move this to an area that says, you know, no outdoor storage. We could remove all of that language and see how this works out. I think this is going to be kind of a, wanna get the opportunity out there and sort of see how this works. And I think it'll probably grow over time. So this probably won't be the last time we talk about it even after the, I think it's adopted.
Well, if it's an outdoor storage, you refer to that as a silo. I mean, that's pretty much the only thing that I can think of as well. Because if someone wants to have outdoor storage, they can just build an accessory structure and then just enclose it in their back area or add in addition to the building that you currently have.
They could, that would be an option as well.
And for, at least for the C4 section, you know, if there's a silo, then they'll, they'll get an exemption for that. If you wanted to build that in there.
Every restaurant, every laundromat has, you know, pretty substantial ducting equipment, you know, for their footwear and all that. It's just about the things, a small silo. I guess my main concern was with the quantity. I just know that if you're doing some type of, uh, you know, even, even medical parts, I mean, you might make tens of thousands of medical parts that you can put on your hand. So we don't really wanna limit quantity per se. Lower order, I think, probably makes more sense, but just quantity, you don't really, really want it.
Well, I think also, I mean, anyone that's gonna come into a building is gonna see the size of the building and they know exactly what production's gonna be. They're not gonna exceed that, otherwise I'll go to the high order, the IT and take something bigger.
And, and I think a lot of this is gonna be, you know, self-healing because you're gonna have, if someone's doing something they shouldn't, everyone's gonna know about it. The neighbors are gonna know about it. You're gonna be waking people up, it's probably going to be an issue. And if it doesn't come up, then we probably shouldn't care.
And I think it can work both ways. So for instance, if we did go the direction where we say, hey, no outdoor storage, we don't provide for any of that, and then we get someone, we're doing the number before, and say, well, we got some stuff outside or whatever, there's potentially that a variance request there. You know, we, we go, again, that's where the, the organicness of this is. So if we provide it the other way, uh, if we do start to see that there's a problem, we're getting businesses that are coming in, but they're just storing junk everywhere.
Right.
You know, maybe that's something that we, we scale back and we go, hey, maybe that's not what this was intended to do. And we were trying to rectify that already through the intent of the code anyhow, but that's not what this was for. But if it needs to be re-examined or built out again at that point.
I would rather see a variance than have it so open that the junk store could start out and we have.
A variance for the outdoor portion?
Yeah, they can come to the city and, you know.
No, I, I completely agree. I'm really not scared of the outdoor stuff, I agree too. So variance.
At least not in the C4.
Variance for the outdoor stuff, I just don't have a limitation of quantity. We don't know what they're making in there. Lower order, I think I'm fine with that term. I don't have an issue there. Uh, I really like the fact that there's no vibration, noise, smoke. The last thing we wanna do is discourage people from being downtown, right? The, the whole purpose is to encourage that.
Exactly, I have a question. One time we had an issue with a lawnmower company that prepared lawn mowers and then stored them outside on the sidewalk.
Yeah, so again, with, with, it, it sounds like we're gonna probably move away from doing the storage, but if the storage were to be in there, it would not be allowed to be up front.
Okay.
Now, display could, so if you're selling your lawn mowers, and we have that in there as well. So you could have display, but then it all has to come in, it has to go indoors, it has to be within storage.
So what exactly is our, I mean, the biggest complaint that I hear usually has something to do with auto, right? Like a sometimes workshop or something. So what is our current regulations on outdoor storage of vehicles that are being parked on, in C4?
So it, it differs in the code, you got a, you got a heading that's, you know.
It's supposed to be in the back?
They're, they are, all, in, in the, in the downtown, they are for sure. Yeah.
I don't think that's being here.
It's not.
Yeah. And that's, that's certainly a code enforcement issue.
Okay.
And I know it's a standard issue, so.
Yeah. Okay.
One of my questions is that, like, somebody has a little, uh, coffee shop. You know, if we go, like, on Main Street, are we gonna allow, like, small tables for people to sit out on the side, the sidewalk area to have their coffee or the muffin or whatever?
Well, part of that would be the idea, I, I don't think that the city right now has a sidewalk.
Right away for DOT, those are all those stuff to, to, to build with. The only one that has it, that was able to have it is the pizza restaurant I've seen so far. Because I spoke to DOT about that during COVID. And they, they said they would be wanting to do it, they're under certain, certain circumstances to allow it. But that if we want anything permanent, we'd have to apply for it and be specific as to where it is and how we receive it and so on. But that's their, that's their property.
Yeah, and there has to be at least four feet to walk around it. So there's some areas, actually, we were talking about, there, there's some areas on Main Street that has, well, four feet. There's a few areas that don't, right?
Yeah, and, and that, again, that's probably another thing to look to bring in here. I know we don't have a sidewalk, uh, cafe ordinance. But yeah, and, and we have written that into here as well. Anything that would be in front for display or for like an eating or drinking area could not be in the right of way. Unless they got express consent from, you know, that authority. If it was a local remedy, you all, state, and DOT, or county, so.
Overall, I love that.
So are we, any further questions or?
Did we make any changes?
Yes, so just for clarification, do we, do we wanna go back and remove the outdoor storage area?
In C4?
Oh, just in the C4?
Just in the C4.
Is it just C4?
Yeah, very importantly for the outdoor.
Okay, so somebody can make a motion, someone to prove the ordinance was that modification.
I mean, the modification of removing the quantity.
No, the quantity, is that in the definition?
As in Article 9 definitions? Transformation raw materials produce lower order, see if they have a smaller quantity then. Might have been in a different section.
We might have that in the introduction for the purpose statement of this.
We have it in 3.11.02.
In, in smaller quantities.
Yep.
Yep, we will need that. So just to, so it would be the removal of, uh, generally in smaller quantities in 311.02A. And then also adding provisions, uh, where outdoor storage, any of that language, uh, that would not apply to the C4s of the original.
There is a move? Is there a second? We have a motion in a second. Any further questions? Seeing now, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Biden?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Zellman?
Yes.
Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Jeff, we thank you very much for your time.
Yes, we appreciate it.
In an era that, uh, the county might perhaps be raising, uh, their fire assessments quite high in the near future, I think that we're sending a good message, uh, to everybody in the county that are looking to change the A M market, potentially a good place to come, so I'm very proud of that.
Yes.
Last but not least, uh, we have the regular city manager updates.
Well, let's get the attorney comments first.
Okay, I didn't see anything, let's get the attorney.
Yeah, so first of all, boneheaded thing, uh, I have to tell you. This approval of the canoe, you know, kayak deal occurred to me in past concessions. In fact, that question was raised by a city manager of those companies, three. And a lot of concessions we have done, that I've ever dealt with for 30 years have been flat rate payment. But for, uh, in contemplation, probably, properly, uh, is this a P3? And, uh, because we're getting 5% of the income for use of our property. Uh, I sent that question while we were sitting here to Lowell Clary, your consultant, and he says, probably. And he said, but we can do it in much more streamlined circumstances, obviously, since it's a simple, uh, use in a small area and so on. And, uh, but 21 days of notice, uh, probably applies. We'll get back with you on that, but we should probably, if you got in contact with that guy, let him know not to pull any triggers, uh, on this until we get that resolved. Because, um, you know, I originally considered, considered it, I look up and now, um, it's, you know, P3, public private partnership with City Park. It, all those talk about, you know, using them to, somebody running your whole park for you. You know, and just like they're talking about running the whole airport for you. It's always very, P3s are using, there are always big, big projects, you know, water, wastewater plant, we're running the whole thing. You know, uh, and so on. So, I guess this really opens up the whole issue we need to deal with on that. Look, look at, this is really small potatoes type thing for P3, but we have to do 21 days notice, we have to do 21 days notice.
So what, what is, what is the issue? I didn't understand what you were saying.
The kayak, the kayak concession?
He's unsolicited, he came to us unsolicited.
It's, it's, it's unsolicited and, uh, wisely, the city manager brought, raised this and I just didn't think so. Uh, the statute is more geared towards huge projects and, uh, and so on.
Okay, I get it, I just didn't understand what you're saying.
While we're sitting here, I read, I read through the statute on my phone and it looked to me like it applied. So I sent an email to Clary and he said, you know, basically, uh, they have to do 21 day notice, but we're gonna talk about it.
Okay. So when we do, but when we do a 21 day notice, we have to pay for the advertising, we have to do all that stuff. And this was unsolicited, so, you know. At, at some point, how many times do we have to incur all these expenses for someone else to make money off of our private property? I mean, I understand we want to bring people down town, but there's also a level of, you know, people need to do their part as well, not just have it handed to them.
Why don't you let us know if it does fall in there or we'll try to figure it out.
Okay, just let him know that this snappi may be, and I, I apologize for that, I should've caught this earlier. So that just did not appear as though that was a typo. Uh, you know, we're talking about bridges, wastewater plants and huge capital projects, so anyway, that being said, we'll look into it. I sent, uh, to city manager, he's distributed to you, uh, this letter from the attorney general's office. It says, well, we really don't have to give you an opinion because the stat, the Board of Legislature just passed a statute that says you can't do it anyway. And, uh, so if you look at the statute, which I, I, I provide you the laws for on that. She sent the letter, I, I, so you can understand what we're talking about. Basically, if you reduce your budget, of course, you're not talking about reducing your budget. You're, you're talking about just not wanting to raise your budget because of the sheriff's park. But nevertheless, it, it may very well apply. And it certainly applies to further down in there, you can find further into the document, if I can find the page of this. I highlighted another area which basically, in, in summary, basically says that, if for some reason you, uh, there's a civil disorder and you don't, uh, hand, you don't send police out to deal with it, then, uh, you could be liable for those damages as a, another exception to your sovereign immunity waiver. It's under, it's on page, uh, six of this document. Says municipality has duty to allow municipal law enforcement agency to respond appropriately to protect this person's property during riot or unlawful assembly based on the availability of adequate equipment to municipal law enforcement officers and relevant state and federal laws. The government body, government, governing body of municipality or person authorized by the governing body, the municipality breaches that duty, the municipality is similarly liable for any damages, including damages arising from personal injury, wrongful death, or personal, or property damages caused by the municipality's breach of duty. The sovereign immunity recovery limits in paragraph A do not apply to an action under this paragraph. So you don't have that $300,000 limitation of sovereign immunity damages, it could be millions of dollars. So it's basically saying this, you can provide police force that's gonna respond to that circumstance. I mean, it's an unusual circumstance, but, you know, nevertheless, um, that could be a city in the liability.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Thanks for the good news.
One, one additional thing. I'm always pulling good news, I know. All right, so anyway, the third, the third item I talked to you about before, we still have no answer on the issue of anonymous, uh, complaints to the code enforcement. Governor still has not signed, I just checked a few minutes ago, still has not signed that bill by any record that I can get a hold of. And, uh, so supposedly goes into, into effect on July 1st. But it doesn't go, and it will go effective if he, if he allows it to expire because, um, there is no, Florida does not have a pocket veto, which is basically if the gov, that's, a pocket veto means the governor can simply put the bill in his pocket and not sign it and it becomes effective, it doesn't become effective. He's basically vetoed it by doing that. In Florida, if he doesn't veto it within a time frame, and I think it's 10 days after the expired expiration of the, of the termination legislature, it automatically becomes law. It's the opposite of the pocket veto, so, um, it may become law by his pocket.
That way he makes no use.
Yeah, well, I, I won't go there, but I'm just saying that that, I, I, as far as I can tell.
So I have a question in regards to that, we discussed this, then I, I just wanna clarify. If, you know, a neighbor doesn't wanna call on a neighbor because it's no longer gonna be anonymous, but they call one of us. Which they will, which they go, let me do. I mean, people call me all the time and I, I, I put my name out there as I want to complain it and I'm okay with that. I think that's what I was hired to do when I got elected. So do we have to disclose who told us or can we just say it was us?
I, I would say yes, because you are the city and you represent the city. There's no case, there's no case.
I have two questions there, which one are you answering?
Well, I'm answering the one about what you have to report, who, who told you? Because you represent the city, just like the code enforcement official would. And so you know it's not, otherwise it becomes an anonymous one, it's just being, uh, provided by you instead. So I, that's all I know at this moment, that, that would be my gut reaction. Obviously, you know, this is what the attorney general's opinions are for later on or case law deals with those things. You know, but, um.
But that's crazy. I mean, what's gonna happen is we're gonna have neighbor against neighbor. No one's gonna complain on anything, it's gonna have to hire more code enforcement.
Well, and, uh, probably this was put together because of neighbor on neighbor issues as well. So you look at both perspectives. The one perspective is, you know, somebody, that some neighbor wants to get harassed, which I've seen. You know, and where they, and they just, they harass them by, by reporting to the code enforcement all the time. Code enforcement comes out and looks for them. That maybe finds something else instead, but, you know, they keep harassing them with that. That's legislative point of view on this. The other side is just, as you said, I know that's dangerous.
So it's anonymous at least, it's anonymous.
After that.
So to this point, it's anonymous at least until July 1st.
Yes. So get your complaints in, is that what you're saying? I'm gonna take a couple days off.
All right, anything else?
Thank you.
Mark, they go away.
Ms. Boone, you want me to pass on the council with the phone? You're welcome. Uh, Ms. Boone, wanted you all to know that, uh, city staff went out, been out two or three times, met with her. And I know that both Randy and David Roberts, I talked to them, been out, went out to the scene. But Randy and Dave Roberts gone out and she said they take care of everything that she has, except the road that's gonna get repaved and told, well, EPI is busy and when they get to it, they're gonna get to it, she's good with that. But she said she was very happy and I said, that's good, I got to deal with a, a happy citizen today, so made my day. So, but thank you, Ms. Boone, for passing that on. And when I pass it on to the two, they'll be very happy to hear that. They don't always hear people giving passes. people giving passes and texts. Thank you very much. Um, Fam, we had our meeting last Monday. We had a meeting, Kerry and I, our Zoom meeting on Monday with the city team, and then with Fam on. Working well together tomorrow, from eleven to twelve thirty is our Zoom meeting with FAA. FAA does not allow Fam in to start with. They never allow that. Um, it's always with the municipality or county, whoever. Um, they had sent out several questions, many that have kind of been answered in, um, going back and forth with Fam, but we provided to them so that they would be involved. They sent it back, and between Lowell and outside council David, they put together, David put together a memo for, um, FAA, and also there's PowerPoint, and the term sheet, and we're meeting with, um, a higher up from Washington DC is gonna be on it, their regional boss is gonna be on it, and the bosses from Orlando are gonna be on it, and I don't know who else. There's gonna be a lot of people that, as Lowell told us, obviously, they're very interested, and David told us to have that type of staff on there. And after we meet with them, Lowell's sending out for us to see what time we're all available, the city team on Thursday, and also Fam, so that we can brief Fam on what went on. Very good. The RFP for the brick building was advertised. It's out, it's, um, on the website, and Danielle, put it on there. Manstar. It's also been advertised in paper once to be, and again, I think it's due to be this Sunday. Had a couple people come by and actually go inside and look at it.
The people that have contacted the city over the course of the last two years, were they notified of?
Yes, also I noted, there was actually four of them. I contacted them and actually sent it for them at the same time, day that we put it out.
What did you say? Is it, is it advertised at our website?
Well, it's on our website.
Oh, our website, okay.
It's on the Manstar, it was in the paper, then it's picked up in the paper, like our other kids are, and it'll be advertised again in the paper.
Okay. The man's, oh, okay, yeah. And it's going out for how long? Is it sixty days?
Sixty days is advertised. Okay. I, um, I had kind of a work in lunch with Warren from APCI and his entire executive staff of the Olympic, they called me and said, I want to meet us, I didn't know who we were, but it was entire client staff, had a nice time. He's got great staff, but for the unforeseeable future, knowing that workers statewide, uh, DOC is running so short. There's seventeen down out at APCI, which actually said that's not that bad compared to where they are in other parts of the state. He did tell me once they're able.
Didn't they reimburse us, or they, right?
They did, they did during the COVID.
Okay, yeah. They, they prorated the amount we already paid in advance. So are they prorating this as well when you have?
They have been billed us. So we're not, we're not paying, and he understands that, you know, DOT is the one really on, from across the state. You know, like, say you drive around, I haven't been that far out of town, but a lot of the meetings have been cut by, because obviously inmates do it. But he told me one, once, it is, he was hoping for actually this week, that's why he probably got me last week, unofficially heard they might start releasing, but now it's unforeseeable because of their hiring, they're having a hard time hiring people. He did tell me, though, when, when they are allowed to in the months to come, that he'll send us an extra crew for like thirty days to catch up on any, um, projects we have, so they can won't charge us, instead of helping us out there, because we understand we're running short, so. Not good news, but it is what it is. And like he says, it's a completely across the state. You had a question on the millings, I got the answer, so we, we just answer it, and if I say something wrong, Rick, you straighten out. But David Roberts told me he got the EPI, and they have so many, so little bit of millings, they just take it and pack it aside the road with it, so they don't take it, nor will there be enough for us, so they're just gonna put it back in the road. Um, David will cover our new, he probably saw it in paper, because the newspaper's not here, they already got ahold of us and ran into an article in the paper on our new finance employee, and David has to say, because he's the one who pronounces names and things.
Uh, her name is Melody Sourhafer. Yeah, I had to ask her a couple times how you pronounce that, and, uh, she's starting on the twelfth of July. So, um, as far as, hey, do you want to go with the background, or you want to?
Sure, you may have a question. Um, Melody, maybe some of you know her. She's the finance director at Prosper. She's leaving there in a couple more days, and she's gonna take a week off to start this on the twelfth. She's been the finance director for eleven years. She, she only has her two-year degree in accounting, um, but she's got eleven years' experience. Um, we actually, or David spoke to the city manager up there, spoke very highly of her. I asked him to call, there's a CPA up there, kind of like John Davis is for us, it's Mike, my name. But he spoke extremely highly of her. He said, makes his job easy, she does such a good job up there. And prior to being up there, she, she was doing some other financing, accounting for different places. Did a great interview with us, we hired her as the analyst, however, I told her I will pay her as the acting finance director, and if we can find a finance director, then we'll feel value like that, but we can't wait, I know Danielle can't wait to get her on here on the twelfth, and hopefully hit the ground running. I told David, see if she started even earlier, but I think she's gonna be a couple days out.
Excellent.
And, um, we actually did a Zoom interview, um, with a lady down in Palm Beach County, who's got sixteen plus years as a city clerk, checks, has a master's degree in political science, and hopefully go to DC when she graduated from Florida State University. Um, but she did an internship and did a, with a clerk, she liked it, and, um, she was, seemed very knowledgeable. Um, she got family over in Tampa, who kind of like to get over here from Palm Beach, so she's been kind of beaten down the door. We started her background, she's been getting hold of David every other day, seeing where it's at. So she was very impressive and has a very impressive background, and she's been HR and other areas, as has this, your Melody's, um, got some time in HR and IT liaison, a bunch of other stuff. Prosper's smaller, but, um, both of them have great backgrounds, we're hoping to be able to get this girl on to city clerk. Very good, we're filling her ranks.
I have a couple questions, though, I might. Were you ever given a reason why Avon Park's fireworks are gonna be on Saturday, the third, instead of the fourth?
We, that's what they asked for.
It was just proposed that way. I don't think anyone asked.
Right.
Oh, I thought it was a land power issue.
No, it was actually when we brought it to mind, that's why I didn't say it right away, because someone brought ours attention, and we went back, say, wait, who was it? Somebody said, council didn't approve the fourth, and I said, no, they approved the fireworks. It's because it's Saturday night. I don't think he wants to do it on a Sunday night where everybody gets back. That's a good question, and that's, I asked David to make sure he got it on our website, so everybody knows, and they've got the sign out there, so. No, it's a good question, because when we first heard it, somebody said, well, council didn't approve that. They approved fireworks, so he's the one putting that, so it's Friday.
You know what? I really thought it was the fourth. We've always had it on the fourth regardless, and even if we have it on the third, people will be popping firecrackers Sunday night anyway. So I would prefer it the fourth. It's neat, but.
I would as well.
Well, there's two. If you get one more, I can get it back in.
And, uh, anything on, uh, IT tech?
On in-house IT? No, we've had it, well, you graciously gave us the position, we advertised right after that. We've had one person that even came close to having the background. Um, we do get a lot and say, I changed batteries and iPhones, things like that. And I talked to Rob Jordan down at Sheriff's Office, who's the IT administrator down there, and I was talking to him last week, actually, about our cameras. I called him on something on that, and they've had just a text open now for, I think it's ten months, or getting close to a year, and they're just interviewing people because they can't find them either, so, believe me, we would love to find somebody to get them in there, because there's a lot of things we could get done within house.
Speaking of cameras.
Yeah, speaking of cameras, sorry.
A citizen asked me about our security cameras that we have on the south side.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, working, I checked.
I understand there was something in the paper that Darren had said, it's been nice to have it, but, um, it isn't true that they've been down since ransomware. They were up. The, um, Sheriff's Office had a shooting down there, the first of the last two, and no one told me the cameras went. I didn't know it. But then I got a call from one of Darren's detective sergeants asking about where the cameras up, and I'm like, I didn't know they were down. We had the second shooting, you had, me and Warren, you had the shooting a few days later, and I got ahold of our IT vendor, and he was on vacation, actually, out of the country, but he's able to pull up, send it down. Anyways, we sent our electrician out. I'll tell you how, from a layman's terms, how it works. It shoots from City Hall over to the water tower, to the Boys and Girls Club, to a corner. That's why I called the IT, and I'm sure it's Sheriff's Office, and who's gonna call Paul after that, if he could come up and help. Anyways, our electrician went over and was on the phone, um, with Kyle, and if there was a, something was plugged in the wrong port, how that happened, I don't know. But they are up and running. Actually, David has the camera, so he can pull it up, and they were up and running.
So you mean plugged in the wrong port from our end, down there?
From ours. The first time it went down, a few months ago, when I found out, it was someone unplugged it, at the Boys and Girls Club, the power, but they keep the, the, uh, the office is in the lack now, so how it got in the wrong port, when our IT vendor gets back, I'll find out. But I'm also gonna reach out to Paul and see if I can use Rob Jordan to come up here, because they can't help unless Kyle can tell them how it's configured. But in a layman IT, it sounds a little ridiculous to me how it bounces around that much to get down there, so I, I plan on taking care of the situation. Anything else for the good, city?
I have one question.
Go ahead.
And speaking of the Boys and Girls Club, did we take care of the issue as reference, as far as the ice machine and the, and the little concession stand and in the building?
I called down there, and I don't know if one of our guys got to go down there yet, because I don't, I wasn't told both of them were down. I forgot, I think the one, they said the one in the building, and, um, Dave told me, he said, well, I don't want to bother on these things. And I said, well, that's what I'm here for, to be bothered, so council bothers me, you can bother me, so. Um, but I hadn't heard back. Our guy was supposed to go down there. Um, in fact, they told me longs air condition, looked at it, and I said, if it's that bad and can't be fixed, then we probably need to replace it down there.
And the second, though, since you mentioned air condition, is the air conditioner running and Boys and Girls Club? These are items that I'm told that's not working. Why are you simply not taking care of these items? Well, you didn't know that we were, it was broke.
They called us and we got, um, three bids on it.
Oh, okay, so you are working on.
Yeah, that was probably at least two weeks ago.
Well, I just heard it last week.
Okay, well, see, we're, we're ahead of you once.
Yes, you are. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Anything else for the good, city?
I have nothing else.
Do you know, entertain a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn, please.
Seeing, seeing opposition, we're adjourned.